...of the Belavista City Council to order, and if we'll all stand for the invocation and the pledge of allegiance.
The invocation will be given this evening by Reverend Hawes from the Belavista Lutheran Church.
I ask you to join me in prayer. Almighty God, you have given us this good land as our heritage. Make us both remember your generosity and do your will. Bless our land with honest industry, truthful education, and honorable way of life. Save us from violence and discord and confusion, from pride and arrogance, and from every evil course of action. Make us who came from many nations with many different languages and united people. Defend our liberties and give those entrusted with the authority of government the spirit of wisdom that they may be justice and peace in our land. In times of prospers, let our hearts be thankful, and troubled times do not let our trust in you fail. We ask you to bless those who hold office and government in our city, Belavista, that they may do their work in a spirit of wisdom and kindness and justice. Help them use their authority to serve faithfully as part of the general welfare of all. Lord Jesus, keep this nation under your care. Bless the leaders of our land that we may be a people of peace among ourselves and a blessing to other nations on the earth. Help us elect trustworthy leaders, those who will contribute to the wise decisions that will cause us to serve you faithfully. Heavenly Father, in your word, you have given us a vision of that holy city to which all nations of the world would bring their glory. Look upon and bless this city, our city, Belavista. Renew the ties of mutual regard and form in us a bond of civic life. We thank you for the honest and able leaders that we have. Help us to move forward in peace and righteousness and justice with order that men and women of differing gifts and talents may find fulfillment here. We pray these things in the name of Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you Pastor Hawes. You'll join me now in pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Alderman Morgan?
Here.
Alderman Snow?
Here.
Alderman Wasnack?
Here.
Alderman Rooney?
Here.
Alderman King?
Here.
Alderman Wilson?
Here.
We have a quorum present.
We're gonna insert one item that's not on the agenda. I'm gonna swear in our newest police officer. Jeff, if you would come up there. If you would raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Jeffrey D. Blake.
I, Jeffrey D. Blake.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Arkansas?
The Constitution of the State of Arkansas.
And the Code of Ordinances of the City of Belavista.
The Code of Ordinances of the City of Belavista.
And that I will faithfully and impartially?
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
Perform the duties of police officer?
Perform the duties of police officer.
For the City of Belavista Police Department?
The City of Belavista Police Department.
In Benton County, Arkansas?
In Benton County, Arkansas.
Upon which I am now about to enter?
Upon which I am now about to enter.
To the best of my ability?
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Welcome you with us. Talk to the city council for hopefully about three minutes about any subject having to do with the city. There was a sign-up sheet out there, we'll go down it first. First name on the list is Dawn Harpel.
My name is Dawn Harpel, 17 Miller Drive here in Belavista. I attended a very interesting meeting Thursday night about, that concerned the Belavista roundabout and the bypass. And I have to say, I was extremely shocked when I found out that they were planning on putting a roundabout in for, oh, just until Missouri comes up with their money to build their end of the bypass, and then they're gonna rip it out, and then they're gonna start the construction of the bypass. How many years of construction are we supposed to live under here? Do you not think, did not someone stand up and scream and yell and get? They could've called me, I would've helped, you know I would've. I am now. I've already been to the quorum court, I've got several justices working on this with me, I've been invited to their planning committee. We have got to stand up as the citizens here in Belavista and fight this roundabout. It is gonna be a minimum of four years worth of construction just south of McNeely Road as you go into Bentonville. They're planning on putting a roundabout. I call them suicide circles. You cannot convince me that they're safe, I grew up around one. We named it that for a reason. But at any rate, when you're gonna put something in, they're going, I've read that it's gonna cost $30 million to put this in. Missouri only needs $25 million to finish their end of it. Let's just make it a gift instead of wasting the money, and let's build the bypass the way it's intended to be built from the beginning. I just, I'm so mostly mad about the waste of taxpayer money. It's not just a Belavista issue, it's not a Bentonville issue, it's every taxpayer in Arkansas's issue. And I would hope that you would all join me in screaming as loud as we can to the state and getting involved in this. Thank you very much.
Next is Andrea Conway, I believe.
My name is Andrea Conway, and I live at 17 Haslington. And I've spoken before about the rezoning on Forest Hills. I just feel that it's irresponsible. I go through that street to get to Quantock Hills, it's an S shape. The school buses, I notice are going way too fast. It's an accident waiting to happen. I truly think that it's irresponsible to change this property to a C2. Thank you.
Those are the only two that signed up. Just in case, did anybody not know they had to sign up and wanna speak to the council this evening? Seeing none, we'll move on with the agenda. Next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes from the September 22nd, our last month's city council meeting. You all had that in your packet. Comments, questions? Discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, we approve the minutes as presented. All in favor, raise your right hand. Moving on to the report section, the mayor's report. I have very few things to talk about this evening. I will mention just a little bit about the roundabout. The roundabout has been discussed now for about five years. I've been to about six or seven meetings. I have expressed concern about it every time. So anyone that also has concern needs to keep expressing it. I have been, or the indication from the leader of the Highway Transportation Department indicates that it's about a 10-year project, not just until, and when I say 10-year project, a 10-year lifespan of the circle, not just until Missouri gets their money and gets their road put together, that it will be an interim solution for approximately 10 to 12 years. And he also indicates that it'll be done in about two and a half. That's the time, I think, that was shown on the letting of the contract, and the contract has already been let. Because of that, I think it's going to be difficult to slow that train. Doesn't mean we shouldn't still try for those that are excited about a roundabout. I've talked to them, and each and every time that I've gone to the meetings, they don't even have a speed limit set for the roundabout yet. That was one of my concerns. How fast are they going to expect you to go through that roundabout? It's not quite as bad as it sounds in that all traffic coming down Highway 49 from the south will not necessarily go through that roundabout. The traffic coming into Belavista will not go through the roundabout. It'll come down the same hill that it comes down now and right on to Highway 71, just in front of the Lowe's like it does now. But if you're coming from the south and wanna go into Bentonville, or want to continue on Interstate 49, you will be required to go out into that roundabout and get your way through the roundabout to get into those two areas. Also, traffic coming or going south from Belavista, it's my understanding you will go through the roundabout there to get on to Highway 49, the divided highway that goes on down to Rogers, Springdale, Fayetteville, on down that way. So it's not quite as bad as it sounds, but it could be pretty exciting. Moving on to the monthly financial report. You all had that in your packet for the month of?
Sent out earlier.
Or sent out earlier, it wasn't in your packet. It came out from our treasurer, Allison. You all have seen it, I hope. Any comments, questions concerning the monthly financial report for the month of September?
I move we approve it.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, we approve the financial report as presented. All in favor, raise your right hand. Next item on the agenda, Emergency Management Committee. Any comments, Mr. Rooney?
Just a few brief. We met October 1st in the fire department training room. It's on Wednesday. The Belavista heydays was discussed, it was a very successful celebration. We raised a considerable amount of funding for, by way of the dunk tank, for purchasing infant car seats. And also, the police department is in process of educating people on the use of car seats. And also, they're working on getting a car seat clinic, work through the emergency clinic. And anybody that needs an infant car seat, you have a grandchild visiting or whatever, contact the police department, they have them to loan, and they will install them for you. They have certified officers for, to install them. There's been a lot more interest in, from residents and the Smart 911 and the B.C. Alert programs offered through the fire and the police, and the chiefs are talking to more groups about these programs. If you're not familiar with them, I will ask them, please, contact the police department or fire department, and they will assist you with this. The committee also wished to thank the members of the CHIPS group. That's a group that put together the mileage information and got it, was successfully getting it passed by our voters here in Belavista to allow the staffing of more public safety personnel. Fire Chief Sims announced the plans for hiring more personnel to staff the new West Side Fire Station. And Chief Sims gave an update on the fire risk mapping he has received, and plans are being made to visit high danger fire areas discussed on the map. The POA is assisting us by placing materials concerning these, all of these public safety programs in the new resident packets when people move here, and that's very helpful. Discussions had on issues with on-grounded electric power, the private lakeshore docks, and pumps that you have in the lake. And the city and the POA, the planning and zoning is working this out, and they're in process of addressing it. A copy of the actual minutes are available on the web, city website or city hall, and I have copies here if anybody wishes to have them. The next meeting is scheduled for November 5th at 9:00 a.m. at the fire station training room, I believe. That's it.
Let me add just a couple of comments to that. You mentioned the additional firefighters that we're gonna put onboard. The fire chief, Steve Sims, is in the process currently. We should have three of those firefighters onboard in the next month, and we will attempt to get three more at the first part of next year. That's about all that we will be able to put onboard because we don't have any more bedrooms to house them in when they're on duty until we get the new fire station built. But we will have the beginning cadre of a group of firefighters that will be able to man and operate that third fire station. So that process has already begun. I will entertain a motion to suspend the rules this evening to read all proposed ordinances and resolutions on the agenda by title only.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, we suspend the rules and read ordinances and resolutions on the agenda by title only. Any discussion? Roll call vote on that motion.
Alderman Morgan?
Yes.
Alderman Snow?
Yes.
Alderman Wasnack?
Yes.
Alderman Rooney?
Yes.
Alderman King?
Yes.
Alderman Wilson?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously, 6-0.
Moving on on the agenda, unfinished business. Item number A is an ordinance, and it's the third reading of this particular ordinance. I'll read it by title only. Providing penalties for damage and for failure to return books and other materials belonging to the Belavista Public Library. Providing for the adoption of administrative policies and fees for the library and for other purposes. And again, this is the third reading. Comments, questions, discussion?
Moved to be approved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, we approve the ordinance upon its third reading. One last chance for comments, questions? Roll call vote on approving the ordinance.
Alderman Snow?
Yes.
Alderman Wasnack?
Yes.
Alderman Rooney?
Yes.
Alderman King?
Yes.
Alderman Wilson?
Yes.
Alderman Morgan?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously, 6-0.
Item number B under unfinished business is an ordinance I will read by title. Amending the City of Belavista zoning ordinance and map by rezoning certain lands, commonly known as 1265 Forest Hills Boulevard, parcel number 16-70211-001, from C1, which is neighborhood commercial, to C2, which is light commercial, and for other purposes. This is the second reading of this ordinance. Comments, questions, discussion concerning the ordinance on the table?
I have voiced my objection to this ordinance in the past, and I'll do so again as it being totally unnecessary and not appropriate for this particular situation of this particular
Any other comments, questions? Hearing and seeing none, it will move forward to third reading next month at city council meeting. Item number C is an ordinance I will read by title only. Prohibiting the discharge of contaminants into the stormwater drainage system and for other purposes. This is the second reading of this particular ordinance.
Mayor, just to refresh the recollection, there is a proposed amendment, I believe it was in the packet, which addresses the issue regarding the potential fines for a violation. And I'm asking that the council amend this proposal in order to bring the fines into line with permissible state law guidelines.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, we amend this ordinance to bring the fines into line? Any comments, questions, discussion concerning that motion? This is not on the total ordinance, this is just on the motion to amend the ordinance, the proposed ordinance. Any comments, questions, discussion? Everybody understands the motion? Everybody understands the amendment? Roll call vote on the motion to amend the ordinance.
Alderman Wasnack?
Yes.
Alderman Rooney?
Yes.
Alderman King?
Yes.
Alderman Wilson?
Yes.
Alderman Morgan?
Yes.
Alderman Snow?
Yes.
Alderman Wasnack?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously, 6-0.
The motion is now back on the floor for discussion at second reading. Any further discussion concerning that ordinance as amended? Hearing and seeing none, that ordinance shall move forward to third reading at the next city council meeting in November. Item number C under unfinished business, I'm sorry, item number D under unfinished business is an ordinance I'll read by title. Supplementing the current effective National Electric Code electrical permit requirements and for other purposes.
Mayor, again to refresh the council's recollection, there were some concerns that I had regarding this proposal. There has been a new draft that is almost done. It'll be quite a bit different than what you have, and so the staff is requesting that the council table this particular ordinance that you have on the agenda now indefinitely. Don't anticipate you'll see that again, and then there'll be something new for you to consider next month.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, we table the ordinance as proposed. Any discussion on that motion? Roll call vote on the motion to table the ordinance supplementing the current effective National Electric Code indefinitely.
Alderman Rooney?
Yes.
Alderman King?
Yes.
Alderman Wilson?
Yes.
Alderman Morgan?
Yes.
Alderman Snow?
Yes.
Alderman Wasnack?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously, 6-0.
New business. Item number A is an ordinance I'll read by title only. Establishing a records retention policy for the City of Belavista and for other purposes. This is the first reading of this ordinance. Comments, questions, discussion? Hearing and seeing none, we shall move it forward to second reading at the November city council meeting. Item number B under new business is an ordinance I'll read by title. Providing for the issuance, denial, and revocation of parade and special event permits and for other purposes. This is the first reading of this ordinance. Jerry, did you wanna talk about this one? This was your request, just to give people a hint as to what we're doing?
It just provides, Mayor, this ordinance just provides a means of establishing a permit process for any type of parade, special event, anything occupying or that might take place on the city streets as a public safety, as a public safety matter, public safety concern. As well as whatever, I think there's been some problems in the past of permanent markings placed on the street, permanent paint markings placed on the streets to provide direction in these, these special, certain special events, and this would prevent that from happening and require that these markings be in the form of a removable or water-removed form of marking that could eventually just wash away, not be a permanent marking on the streets to create any type of confusion for whatever the matter might be.
Attorney Kelly, did not, weren't there a couple of changes that you put into the version two that was at the council meeting?
There were, and these got put into the, to your packet before the meeting, so there really wasn't gonna be a need to amend. But I'll point, at least point those out to you so you know what you have in front of you here for your first reading. One is, we inserted a permit fee of $25. That was one of the blanks that you had. Another blank in there had dealt with the deposit. The mayor requested that the deposit requirement be taken out, so there was not a number put in there for a deposit. The other issue that I recall we specifically talked about was the age of unaccompanied children, and the mayor requested that, and we put in there that that be 10 years of age. And that is what's in your draft. I think those are the particular topics we talked about.
And those were for unaccompanied children?
That's correct.
Is that each child has to be accompanied by an adult, or an adult can accompany a group of 10-year-olds?
Well, I'll put it this way, I would, I'd like the council to address its desire on that, and I will make sure that it reads exactly the way you intend.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions concerning that proposed ordinance? Does the council have any druthers concerning accompaniment of children in parades or events?
Well, I think a group of Cub Scouts or whatever the group of small children might be being accompanied by one person should be sufficient to deal with the matter.
I agree.
As it reads now, is that the way you would read it?
There might be a limit on the number of children.
What I'm gonna suggest is this is on the first reading, and I will draft up some wording so it could be officially amended at the next meeting, so it'll be exactly, we'll have it clear exactly what is intended by that, so.
Thank you.
So just to make sure I understand, you're okay with one adult supervising a group of children in the parade?
I think there, I think there needs to be a limit on the group. If one adult is supervising 30 10-year-olds, they might need help.
Is there, is there any general, is there any general consensus about a maximum number of children per adult?
We may, yeah, we may wanna get some kind of a child-to-adult ratio.
10 is a good number.
10's a good number.
10, okay.
10 per adult, yeah.
Then what I will do is, is you'll see a proposed amendment that will do that, and then I'll let somebody take it over and move to amend it if they want to.
Mayor, for whatever I happen to think of, for whatever, one of the reasons that this ordinance came up was because of the various races, our various bicycling, running events that we have in Belavista, and those things happening without any kind of notification. I think there is a state requirement that if a state highway is going to be used for any kind of event such as this, that they also have to be notified. But this provides for, again, a public safety issue where people are aware, as well as law enforcement, EMT, be made aware that these events are happening so that should someone happen to round a corner someplace and there be a group of bicyclists or runners, that they should have some kind of advance warning that this is taking place.
Any other comments, questions? Anything else needed in that ordinance as proposed? Hearing and seeing none, we'll move that on to second reading with the suggested changes that our lawyer, I'm sure, will make so that we all easily understand it. Item number C is a resolution I'll read by title only. Approving amounts of liens to be certified to the Benton County Tax Collector against certain real properties as a result of grass-cutting expenses and abatement of other nuisances by the City of Belavista and for other purposes.
Mayor, again, there was a memo from our development director. We have received a payment on one of the properties listed on that resolution, that being 19 Bosworth Circle. The proposed amount you saw there on your draft was $398.41. I believe that's been paid, and so it would be in order, Mayor, if someone would move to amend the resolution to strike that address and amount from the resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, we amend the resolution and delete 19 Bosworth Circle and the amount that they owed so that there will not be a lien put against their property because they did make the payment? Any discussion concerning the motion to amend the resolution? Not the resolution, just the motion to amend it. Roll call vote on the motion to amend the resolution by deleting 19 Bosworth Circle.
Alderman King?
Yes.
Alderman Wilson?
Yes.
Alderman Morgan?
Yes.
Alderman Snow?
Yes.
Alderman Wasnack?
Yes.
Alderman Rooney?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously, 6-0.
We're now ready to take up the proposed amended resolution. Any other comments, questions, discussion concerning that resolution? Entertain a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, we approve the resolution as amended. One last chance for comments, discussion? Roll call vote on approving the resolution.
Alderman Wilson?
Yes.
Alderman Morgan?
Yes.
Alderman Snow?
Yes.
Alderman Wasnac?
Yes.
Alderman Rooney?
Yes.
Alderman King?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimous, six zero.
Item number D under new business is a resolution I'll read. Establishing a petty cash fund for various departments in an amount not to exceed $100 each. Comments, questions, discussion concerning that resolution?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, we approve the resolution as presented. Discussion, questions? Jerry?
Motion.
Looked like you had a question.
Nope, not one.
Roll call vote on the resolution.
Alderman Morgan?
Yes.
Alderman Snow?
Yes.
Alderman Wasnac?
Yes.
Alderman Rooney?
Yes.
Alderman King?
Yes.
Alderman Wilson?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimous, six zero.
Item number E is a resolution I'll read by title. Accepting the revised City of Bella Vista Employee Handbook dated October 2014. Comments, questions, discussion?
Moved to be approved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, we approve the revised handbook. One last chance for comments, questions?
How were the revisions derived at? Did we look at other city employee handbooks or?
We contracted with Behrens Management. We got council approval to do that, I forget, late last year. And I've been working with them based on some of the changes we needed to bring it into compliance with what we're actually doing. Connie has a lot of experience in employee handbooks and we relied heavily on her guidance.
And we had several meetings with several of the department heads, folks in the administration department in trying to make sure that we got all the things in there that we've talked about over the past five or six years since the handbook was originally put together.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Roll call vote on approving the resolution adopting the handbook.
Alderman Snow?
Yes.
Alderman Wasnac?
Yes.
Alderman Rooney?
Yes.
Alderman King?
Yes.
Alderman Wilson?
Yes.
Alderman Morgan?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimous, six zero.
Item number F, a resolution I'll read by title. Endorsing primary, the primary entry sign design located on U.S. Highway 71 and for other purposes. As we discussed at the work session, we've had a committee of a couple of members from the P O A and a couple of members from the city. And they've been working for four, five, six months in trying to come up with a entry sign design for both the south and north ends where the earthen signs were that used to say Bella Vista Village and have been removed over the past several months. This is a resolution endorsing the concept of the, what the committee came up with and recommended and allowing us to move forward to come up with a way to fund and get those signs put up. Probably tough to see, but that's a drawing, rendering of it. I think you all saw it at the work session.
Mayor, would there be an amendment to the resolution or whether it be just a suggestion? I think a second flagpole would add to the balance of that particular sign. A second flagpole for the Arkansas flag or maybe even a City of Bella Vista flag. But that one flagpole seems to unbalance the sign.
There are two ways to look at signs. Some of them like them symmetric and you're obviously one of those kind. Some of them, some of them like them on purpose, not symmetric. And I think that's where the committee came down. But we can certainly, if that's the council's druthers, we can certainly bring that up.
As I said, would there be an amendment to the resolution or simply a suggestion, an opinion?
What do I hear from the rest of the council?
Put two flags on one pole.
Which would be the second flag?
Leave it as it is. I just drew it up.
Can I say something?
Certainly.
Um, let me just kind of give the council a little bit of a heads up. I think this, obviously this is a cooperative effort with the Property Owners Association. There've been a lot of discussions and talking and an agreement about what the sign's going to look like. And I just want to warn you that if we say, okay, but if you change this, I think you can expect it to come back the other way and we might end up in a back and forth. So just, just to kind of give you a little bit of a heads up, I don't know that that would happen, but it could.
Mayor, I don't think that we're going to come up with an agreement, a sign that everyone is going to like. I certainly appreciated the time, I appreciate the time the committee put in in putting this together and I think we should move ahead with it.
Here's it is.
I would concur with Mr. Rooney. I think this is a really excellent-looking sign, very impressive. And the construction materials are very, very, very durable.
Any other comments, questions?
They've lasted about 50 years, about 50 years durability.
Motion to approve is presented.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, we approve the resolution as proposed. One last chance for comments? Roll call vote?
Alderman Wasnac?
Yes.
Alderman Rooney?
Yes.
Alderman King?
Yes.
Alderman Wilson?
Yes.
Alderman Morgan?
Yes.
Alderman Snow?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimous, six zero.
Item number G under new business is a resolution. I'll read by title. Approving a contract with Crafton &amp; Toll &amp; Associates Incorporated for design, development, and bidding services related to construction of a new street department facility on State Highway 279. Comments, questions, discussion concerning that resolution? We discussed it for a while at our work session. I think everybody understands it. It's basically a contract between us and, between the city and Crafton &amp; Toll to go ahead and specifically design the interior, exterior of the building, get the bidding documents put together, go out for bid, accept the bidding. We will then be back to the City Council to approve the contract, to go forward with construction. And this particular resolution and this contract with Crafton &amp; Toll, they will do the oversight of the contract, make sure that the materials or right, correct materials are used, that the correct compaction, wherever they have to compact, the earth is taken care of, those kinds of things are covered in this particular contract that we're approving this evening.
Moved to be approved.
Second.
One last chance for comments?
What was the timeframe on that again? From approximate, when they think they'll get this done, they can actually start putting something?
Bidding? We're hoping, we're hoping to get the bid out tail end of this year, very early next year.
Okay. And from there?
From there, the construction will depend on what it is we approve as a City Council that it will look like and what the contractors think they can do.
Okay.
Everyone understands what we're, what we're voting on this evening? A contract with Crafton &amp; Toll for design, development, and the bidding process? Roll call vote?
Alderman Rooney?
Yes.
Alderman King?
Yes.
Alderman Wilson?
Yes.
Alderman Morgan?
Yes.
Alderman Snow?
Yes.
Alderman Wasnac?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimous, six zero.
Item number H under new business is a resolution I'll read by title. Authorizing the millage rate of property taxes for the City of Bella Vista, Arkansas for the year 2014 to be collected in 2015. Everybody understands the process? The state of Arkansas collects one year behind. They wait till near the end of the year to actually establish the rates for that year. Seems a little backwards to me, but Arkansas has done that for many, many years. So what we're doing right now is authorizing the millage rate that's been going on since January 1st of this year. And that money, those monies will be collected next year. As you look at what it says in that resolution, we're not suggesting any raises for the general mill, which is 2.5 mills. It does include what was passed by the voters that was mentioned earlier by Mr. Rooney, and that is the one-half mill, five tenths of a mill for the policeman pension fund and the one mill passed for the fireman pension fund. So a total of four mill. But it's spread out into three different amounts and obviously, as was passed by the voters and is set up under state statute, the half mill for policemen's pensions and the one mill for firemen's pensions cannot be used for anything else.
Moved to be approved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, we approve the resolution as presented. One last chance for comments, questions? Everybody understands what you're approving? It'll go forward to the quorum court. They will then pass it as a total package for all millages within Benton County, including school boards, other cities, and the county itself. No questions, no comments? Roll call vote?
Alderman King?
Yes.
Alderman Wilson?
Yes.
Alderman Morgan?
Yes.
Alderman Snow?
Yes.
Alderman Wasnac?
Yes.
Alderman Rooney?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimous, six zero.
We're now down to the announcements. The Planning Commission Work Session is scheduled for Wednesday, October 29th, 4:00 p.m. in the Fire Department Training Room. The regular meeting of the Planning Commission for November is scheduled Monday, November 10th, 6:30 p.m. in the Fire Department Training Room. The City Council Work Session for November is scheduled November 17th, 5:30 p.m. in the City Hall Conference Room. The next regular meeting of the City Council is Monday, November 24th at 6:30 p.m. right here in this same room. Meeting is adjourned.
Right, y'all.